I'd like to welcome me once our November the 19th Planning Board meeting. Also Commissioner Coulson, he's always here, appreciate him being here. And those of you in the audience television, we appreciate you tuning in. At this time, we have our roll call.
Hey, Bearfoot, here. Marty.
Here.
Wanda Harrington.
Here.
Thomas Harris.
Here.
Aaron Hines.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Clayton Malloy Jr. Matt Nobles.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Here.
Danny Smith.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Johnny Penner will not be in attendance tonight.
Okay, thank you. This time, we have our prayer by Lyman Hardy and then our pledge will be by Thomas Harris.
Our Father in Heaven, we give you praise and thanks, dear Lord, for this day. And we just ask you to bless this board tonight, Lord, on the decision that it has to make, the planning department, Lord, that we will be wise, make the right decision concerning this county. As always, we give you praise and thanks in Jesus's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Government motion for the approval of minutes of our October meeting. Second.
Second.
Okay, all in full sight.
Aye.
This time, we'll go to James for our planning matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. We're going to talk about your review tonight. We have one zoning ordinance text amendment, and this is for the water supply watershed, and this is a high-density option. What this is, we've talked about a little bit, of course, most of you were here for our planning board orientation session a little bit earlier, but just to refresh your memory on this, the water supply watershed regs were put in place about 20 years ago, and this was a state mandate. Any area in the state of North Carolina that had any public water supply where the intake was on a surface water, and in this case, in Pitt County, Greenville Utilities has its drinking water intake along the Tar River, and actually, it is just upstream of the city itself. So if you look at the map that's on the screen now, just to orient you a little bit, this is Martin Luther King Boulevard, the bypass, right here where it crosses. The actual intake on the river is just a bit further upstream, I should say downstream from there. So it's about right here in the G of Greenville on the map. 10 miles upstream from there, the state regulations require that there be some protective measures in place. So this is basically the watershed. What's shown in orange here is the watershed 10 miles, within 10 miles, upstream of that particular intake on the Tar River. So this area actually flows either by tributary or some other natural feature into the Tar River and thus travels towards the intake. It just so happens, there were four different classifications for these water supply watersheds. The one in Pitt County is the least restrictive. It is a watershed for the other ones, like in the Piedmont area and areas where water hits a creek fairly quickly, flows real quickly downstreams. Those requirements were a lot more restrictive than what we've got in place here. So nonetheless, this went in place about 20 years ago, and in the unincorporated part of the county, given that there weren't really a lot of restrictions in place, we did not move forward with a high-density option at that point in time. However, given some of the development patterns we're seeing now, just as an example, in Belvoir, the new Dollar General that's gone in there, by the time you put the store in, the parking area, you've got a lot of impervious surfaces over a small area of land. And with that, we're seeing the need to move towards this high-density option to ensure that we've got the stormwater controls in place that we need. So for the regulations, what we have done in drafting these regulations, we have, it's actually an overlay district. The area you just saw is an overlay district within our zoning ordinance. And so for you new members, not only do you have the regular zoning requirements, whether it's a rural residential district or whatever, but you'll also have these water supply watershed regulations on top of that or overlaid on top of that. What we have done to draft these, we pulled down the state model language to incorporate into our ordinance, so it's really what the state allows as far as high-density options. And it's included in a number of sections in your ordinance. You'll see the draft language in your package tonight. Section 3 has been amended for the permitting process and also the application review process, and then actually, the standards of sorts are listed in Section 7 through several different subsections within there. And just for your highlights here, currently, within the county and then within this overlay district, if you've got an area that is built without curb and gutter, the amount of impervious surfaces is not supposed to exceed 36%. In effect, what the high-density option does is almost double that. It allows you to go up to at least, to no more than 70% of the built-upon area. Now, what comes along with that are a lot of stormwater requirements. We're already seeing these, these new requirements have somewhat been absorbed in our existing Neuse River and Tar Ham stormwater regulations. So a lot of what's already in place will help developers achieve the requirements in the high-density option. So we do have stormwater devices, that's your wet detention ponds, that's your grass wheels and things of that sort, that will take out these total suspended solids and also help with the runoff effects. As part of this, these engineered devices are only as good as they're maintained, and it does take some maintenance, either for the vegetation or actually cleaning it out from time to time, especially if it's a wetland, you can get some invasive species in there, so that has to be taken care of. It also requires an annual report to ensure that things are working as it's supposed to. We did add definitions into this ordinance as well, or to the zoning ordinance, and that's for the Technical Review Committee, and that is a group of local government officials that meet together, work together to ensure plans meet the standards within the regulations that are applicable. And then also, we have a reference to the watershed administrator and who's responsible for signing off and carrying out these regulations. We also discussed in our orientation session, this is an amendment to our zoning ordinance, so with this, there is a requirement for a comprehensive land use plan consistency statement. And so with that, what staff has drafted for you tonight, we feel like it is consistent with the land use plan by allowing this option within the water supply watershed overlay district. It meets the plan's goal to protect water quality, significant natural features, and other natural resources that have ecological, recreational, and other important values. As far as the reasonableness statement and whether it's in the public interest, we also agree that it is, and this statement's also been drafted. The water supply watershed is a source of drinking water to many Pitt County residents and citizens, and it's, the proposed amendment reflects the language in the state's model ordinance. So again, it is already been reviewed two decades ago as far as what its public interest is, and provides specific regulations for managing the land use and stormwater runoff within the water supply watershed. So all this, we believe, does carry forward the goals and policies listed in your land use plan. So, Mr. Chairman, what we're recommending from the staff level tonight is to forward the draft amendment language to the commissioners for their consideration. This will have to be considered during the public hearing. And there's also an existing standalone water supply watershed ordinance that was in place before zoning came into play, and we treat it now as an overlay district, so the older ordinance needs to be repealed in place of this overlay. And tonight, we do want to entertain public comment, and as far as the progression here, we're looking at holding a public hearing with the commissioners on December 15th. And at this time, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, to entertain public comment.
Well, I've got a couple to sign up. I can't read the names from them, look like Steve.
He signed over the wrong petition.
They signed, DC was on the wrong.
He wants to speak on the number six.
Okay, all right. Do we have anybody here that wants to comment on the definition of the administration of stormwater watershed? I see no one here that wants to speak for or against it. Hereby declare the public hearing closed. What's the wish of the board?
I recommend we take staff recommendation.
Can I check it?
Has been recommended, seconded, but everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those are proposed notes, ayes and ahs, so it's been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see number five's been withdrawn.
It has, Mr. Chairman, and I did want to mention, we have received notification from the petitioner that they'd like to have that item withdrawn, so we just wanted to make you aware of that. They have submitted a formal note in writing about that withdrawal, so we'll move on to the next item then.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is development review of the Autumn Ridge Section 2 preliminary This plat's, or this site's located on VOA Site C Road, north of its intersection with Stansburg Road in the Arthur Township, sits right between Stansburg and 264 at the intersection of VOA Site C and Stansburg. 16 lots, 27.69 acres. Here you can see on your screen a view of the site area. It's outlined in blue there. You can see a pond on the property. Site comes out, it takes us access off of VOA Site C. Some of the areas of the site contain flood hazards. There are 100-year floodplain and actual floodway on the property, at the rear of the property. The site zone rules residential, and electricity is provided by GUC and water by Bell Arthur Water Corporation. Here's a larger view of the site. The areas in blue and red, areas in blue is the 100-year floodplain, again, it's at the rear of the property, and that property slopes off down a hill towards the top of the map, down towards the back of the property, and the area in red is the actual floodplain where the, where the stream is down in there. Floodway, excuse me. And again, you can see there's a, there's a sizable pond on the property, and behind that pond, and I'll show you again on the site plan, you'll be able to see it better, there are two smaller ponds on the property. Here's a, here's the site plan showing the lot layout, the street layout, the ponds and the pertinent features. Again, it's 16 lots. Conditions and requirements, plant, the planning staff are requesting a stubout street to connect the development with the adjacent parcel to the west. Again, those of you that were here for the orientation session, we like stubout streets. They, they connect with the adjacent property to take pressure off the state roads at the entrance to the subdivision, so they don't have to get back out on the main roads. They allow emergency vehicles to come in, they allow school buses to not have to turn around on the cul-de-sac. From a planning perspective, it's a good thing. We'd also like a wetland delineation, there's significant, you know, especially with the floodplain property and the ponds, there's probably significant wetlands on the property. Just have the engineer note those areas on the final plat. Add riparian buffers around the small ponds, they actually show up as stream features on the map, on a USGS map. Emergency services, there are going to be fire hydrants in there anyway, emergency services would like the fire hydrants at the entrance to the subdivision and the vicinity of the lot line between lots 13 and 14. GUC needs some easements for their electrical service, and NC DOT has requested that the developer get the driveway permits before construction. Here's the site plan again. The ponds are highlighted in blue. The two ponds at the top of the map, they're the smaller ponds that actually need riparian buffers around them. They connect to the creek at the rear of the property. Highlighted in red here is you can see the new road as planned by the developer. Planning staff would like a stubout in the vicinity of the, just before you get to the cul-de-sac. You can see where we would like the stubout to connect to the adjacent property. We also would be okay with, instead of a cul-de-sac connecting the street to the adjacent property outright, and in that case, the developer would do a temporary cul-de-sac at the property line, and generally, that's done with rock on each side of the road. And you can see the start areas, that's where emergency services would like their fire Here's a picture of the site. This is the actual site itself facing west. As you can see, it's agriculture field right now, and that large fish pond is right in here, if you can see my mouse cursor, behind these trees, right in here. This is facing east across the road from the site, again, agriculture, farm field. Facing north up VOA Site C, you can see the bridge, the overpass for 264 right there. You've got residential houses on each side. There's two houses being built as part of the first section of this development on the left side of the road. And then this is facing south, back down VOA Site C towards Stansburg, and the house on your right is one of the new ones under construction. Technical Review Committee recommends conditional approval of the plat, and I'd also note, we did send public notices out notifying residents in the area that this is a proposed development, and I think there may be some folks in the audience tonight that want to speak, that want to speak to that. Also, the developer's engineer is here, I believe he would also like to speak.
He's banned or...
And I'll entertain any questions you guys have or public comment.
Yes, sir.
Where the stubout street is going.
Right.
That is also an agriculture field at the moment, is that correct?
Correct, yes, it's undeveloped.
And how big is that property?
It's a similar-sized property. It's, it may not, 44 acres.
Is there any road frontage on that property?
Um, not certain, I can tell you that. Actually, that property does have road frontage. This is a property we, we want to connect it to. There is road frontage on Stansburg, yes. Any other questions? I'll turn it over to public comment if that's all right with y'all.
Yeah, it'll be fine. We have several people to sign up and speak. I can't quite read the writing.
Steve Janowski.
Okay, all right.
That's what I don't do very well.
Okay, that's fine. Just come right ahead, you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Steve Janowski, I'm with Rivers and Associates. I represent Happy Trail Farms, the owner of this property and the developer, and we've worked with staff, and basically, I have no objections except for the interconnectivity on this piece of property. If you can see that, we basically have, on average, you've got 27 acres and you've got 16 lots, on average, we've got greater than an acre per lot. One of the things that we've got on there is, if you look at that piece, it's in the corner of VOA C Road and also Stansburg Road, and this other track which has a, probably has 400, 500 feet of frontage on Stansburg Road, we're not blocking that individual. So what would end up happening is, as folks went out towards, trying to use that to cut back in towards the Greenville area, we'd end up, this would be a cut through for the other subdivision. And on behalf of the developer, we would like to request that that not happen. The other thing that would happen too is, we'd actually, there's a ridge that runs from the power line, kind of in the, almost parallel the road, if you see the way the road moves in, the ridge follows that, and it drains back. I've just also been aware too, this evening, that there's a low area that's in the back of the neighbors' lots, back in there, on the other, on their side of the power line. If we end up putting that road in, we're going to have to direct that impervious area because it goes over the ridge, through the ridge, to the ditch, so we'll actually be doing just the opposite of what I told them. I told them we wouldn't be adding any water to that particular drainage feature because everything was on the pond side, the floodway side, and the VOA side. But if we cut that piece in, there's no doubt that we'll be draining more water into that ditch, which already backs up into that little low area. So I would just ask that part of the conditional approval be to eliminate that comment of requiring the interconnectivity. We understand its value, and we, but we, in the county areas, a part of that value is that when folks might get landlocked or have very limited frontage, this particular individual, Mr. Hedgepath, and we've talked to him, and he absolutely has no desire for us to connect to him personally, and I know we're talking about in the future, he has no personal plans to do anything with that piece of property, but it would be his wishes that we not tie to his property. So just, any questions?
Anybody on the board got any questions? Steve? Okay, thank you, sir.
Just as a response, also, we would also like to note, on the site plan, this electrical easement that runs across, that runs across the bottom of the property, also runs across the adjacent land. A stubout, for more than one reason, may be a good idea here, because that electrical easement may cut off the access from Stansburg running over the property. Also, on the western side of the adjacent property, you've got a pond that blocks access to Fish Pond Road. So if that property ever was to develop, it most likely would need to take its access from this Autumn Ridge Lane and the subdivision coming in off of VOA Site C. So it may be a prudent thing to connect, and I mean, I know Mr. Hedgepath has no intention to selling it now, but the property does develop over time, and in 10 or 20 years, when the property's changed hands, perhaps, they may be ready to develop it, and this would likely be an access, and it'd be good to plan for it now. That's all I'll say about that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to use of the last 30 seconds of my three minutes. There is no restriction on that electrical easement to keep traffic from going through. Matter of fact, even as a part of our development, we have two driveways that would be planned on going across that to access their properties in the rear, so it does have no restriction to develop towards Stansburg Road.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? And family?
I'm not signed in, but I would like to say something.
Okay, come up in and give your name, sir. You have three minutes.
My name is Robert Millahorn. I live on one of the adjoining lots off of Stansburg Road. This is a family farm piece. We've grown up on the farm, we know what the water does, we know how that property flows, we know how the water flows. We're concerned about water runoff. The engineers are saying that the water's going to do this and the water's going to do that. We already have issues with water standing on our land now as a farm field. We're concerned that when these lots go in, that there's going to be even more water coming back towards the Stansburg Road, and the engineer's saying, he's an engineer, I'm just a person, but I grew up on the land. We would like to make, we would, we're just concerned, as all of the owners of that whole side of the property, where the power lines are going through, that things need to be looked at, either from an engineering side to help us with water being directed away from our side. There is a creek at the bottom, and we are having issues with our properties perking now, and again, I've seen water standing on that property. I'm finding it very difficult in my mind's eye to see how all of this got approved when our properties didn't get approved, and we had to relocate septic tanks that had been on our property for almost 100 years. We now no longer meet the current codes, same kind of lands down there, and I know I'm probably out of time, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? hereby declare the hearing closed this time. What's the wish of the board? Are there any comments from the board about this stub?
I looked at the piece of property, and I rode back out and looked at it, and the stubout road, I can't see where it would ever be used, and it's going through some kind of rough territory going back to Fish Pond Road, though.
But?
I think that we should be consistent with the stubout and continue to keep that stubout in, because in years to come, we're going to, we never know what's going to happen down the road, and so it would be best to me to keep the stubout in.
I have a question about the adjoining property. Sure. You know, I guess back to what he was saying as far as perk, are those, those lots, I mean, all of those lots, they're not, the sewage will not have to be pumped or anything, they all can...
Everything's planned as of right now for on-site septic. Everybody's going to have their own septic tank on their lot and their own nitrification lines on their lot.
Okay, and as far as the property, well, I mean, obviously, y'all haven't tested or anything like that.
Right.
But I mean, I'm assuming it's a similar-type property, so there is the possibility that in the future, it would perk and could be developed.
Probably.
I mean, I know...
Right, yeah.
You know, it's broad.
Again, you know, Pitt County, you can't speak for, you know, until you go out there and do the soul's work, but...
And as far as road frontage on that property, it's hard to tell. I mean, there's right much road frontage on that adjoining property, isn't there?
You know, Steve said he thought there's at least 400, 500 feet of road frontage on the adjoining property. You know, like I said, planning staff wants it, it's good planning for the future, but again, this is that subjective thing where we leave it up to y'all, and at this point, you've got two different views, it probably need to put it to a vote.
Well, I hate to see, you know, you don't know what the future is, but if you get on that and the land is sold next to it and you ain't got a stubout, sun halves aren't down that one road, it's one way in, one way out, them folks are locked in there.
Right.
Emergency day ain't going nobody to get in that to them.
Yes, sir.
That's my problem. We got the same situation, they got a piece of land that, and they're blocked at one road, you got all that folks out, they can't get out.
It's hard for fire trucks to get in and out if there's a fire.
That's right.
So that's our perspective.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, and with Ms. Fay here, that it does need a stubout, we need to be consistent and keep it consistent, and take the recommendation of the planning board, so...
Anybody else on the planning board got any comments?
I'd like, we worked years and years on trying to get stubouts for subdivisions, and we finally got some. we finally got something in place that we thought was a pretty good thing, and I don't think we should vary from it now. I'll second his motion.
All right, let's vote, everybody in favor of the stubout? Raise your hand. All those opposed?
Okay. All right, so the stubout requirement is in, and now the, the next is overall approval of the development.
Okay.
Do, do I have a motion either way on that?
Blew to approve.
Most been made to approve it?
Second it.
Second it. All in favor of approving the overall? Raise your hand. All those opposed? Ben Karen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just a few informational items. Just wanted to let you know, the board had dealt with the rezoning several months ago. I'm pleased to report out that it has finally worked its way through the commissioners after several months, and that was the big rezoning request down near Pactolus by Justin Whitehurst. It was downzoning about two hundred acres and upzoning another two hundred acres around the recycling center there. So, that has been laid to rest, it was approved by the commissioners. There were, were a few changes as far, minor changes to some extent, but made it more palatable for the folks that were involved, so we're happy to report out that's been resolved at this point. Your wedding and event facility text amendment that you dealt with last month, that was approved Monday night by the commissioners, and with your recommendation that the separation or setback only be four thirty feet off the property lines in residential neighborhoods. So, that was approved and is effective immediately. Michael Bateman rezoning, remember that was on NC eleven north, just south of Bethel, that was also approved by the commissioners on Monday. Building code, just so you know, building code enforcement ordinance, we, that ordinance had been in place in its current status before Monday night's meeting. Over twenty years, there were policies and administrative processes that were not accounted for, and more in particular, there were a lot of citations from building code and the administrative policies that were not correct in the existing ordinance, so that has been updated, and really, no major changes there except to bring it up to the current requirements that are needed. There was also a conditional use permit, as Eric mentioned, that goes straight to the commissioners for review, is for sand mine, and that conditional use permit was approved on Monday night. Just to bring you up to date on the Neuse River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, you'll recall, we, staff's been working on that for about a year now. We're happy to report, that has been submitted to the state for review a couple of weeks ago, so we're waiting to get some good response from them. And just wanted also to bring you up to date on another planning process that we're involved with, and that's the site plan update for the District Park, the Alice F. Keen District Park on County Home Road. We had a public meeting on, last week, and of course, the District Park covers a number of different areas. We've got everything from recreational fields to walking trails, the community center itself out there, lot of good activity. If you haven't been out there lately, you need to make it out there, especially before the farmer's market closes sometime soon. Lot of good trails out there, a lot of good opportunities to get active. And what we did, we're trying to see what other facilities the community wants, and we had a public meeting last week, and several people came out and gave us some input about that. Just in case you were wondering what the top priority is, the people that showed up want pickleball courts. So, that's a new recreation activity that I'll say the older generations here in Pitt County are seeking, and I'll let you Google that when you get home to see what pickleball's about. So, you can also look on, yes, sir.
I'm old and I ain't never heard that.
Well, I will tell you, we have some very interesting citizens, and basically, it's a combination between tennis, badminton, ping pong. And you have a net, and you've got a paddle, and you've got something like a, oh, wiffle ball of sort, a wiffle ball, and you go back and forth across the net with it. If you're somewhat immobile like myself, it is a prime sport for you. And I would, a lot of people are interested in it, and it, again, gets a lot of people up and active, and it is something that a lot of age groups could enjoy. So, that's what we saw from our meeting last week. We've got a lot of information on our website that's posted on the screen, and that's all we have for tonight.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No.
We adjourn. Thank you all for coming.